Sir. Okay, I want to call the meeting to order at five thirty-two. At five thirty-two. And trustee Rotuski Heinz, would you be willing to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Put your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, I forgot, I wasn't talking to kids, though.
Okay, roll call. Trustee David.
Here.
Trustee Morris.
Here.
Trustee Rotuski Heinz.
Here.
Trustee Hinkin here. And trustee Manning is not yet here. Okay, move to approval of the minutes from our last meeting, the, uh... Was that July fifteen was the last one?
August eleventh.
Oh, right, okay, got it, August eleventh. I'll take a moment to read through quickly and then entertain a motion to approve. Are there any corrections?
Not that I see.
Not that I see.
Okay, a motion to approve, please.
I move that we approve the minutes of the August eleventh, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Councilmate.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, super. Any public comments on the agenda?
We don't have any comments.
Public comments from the floor? All right, take a look, everyone, please, at resolution LB twenty twenty eleven.
To approve resolution LB twenty twenty dash eleven. I'll check register. I can add motion?
I second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Trustee David.
Aye.
Trustee Morris.
Aye.
Trustee Rotuski Heinz.
Aye.
Trustee Hinkin, aye. So it passes. Budget information. Is this... Oh, Marie, thank you.
Good evening.
Oh, that's cool.
My name's Marie Ritchie, I'm the Assistant City Manager, so I wanted to introduce myself to you tonight as well as bring you some information regarding our fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget and measure AV for your information. So first, we'll start off with the fiscal year twenty twenty-one adopted budget. You can see our revenues are projected to be seventy-one point seven million. Our expenditures are at seventy-seven point one million with a deficit of five point four million. Our city council made a difficult decision and decided to utilize reserves that we had saved for the rainy day and it is now here. And instead of cutting a lot of programs in the general fund, they went ahead and tried to save the community programs as much as we could as we moved forward.
Wow, fantastic.
For our twenty twenty-one adopted budget, this provides an illustration of what our revenues are made of. You can see thirty-three percent is property tax, twenty-six percent is sales tax. Other revenue is development fees, permits, business license and things like that, or charges for services. Transfers in are funding from other funds such as loans and grants. And then TOT, which is the transient occupancy tax, or also known as the hotel tax at six percent. On the right is the twenty twenty-one expenditures and how the funds are allocated. You can see mainly, a majority of our general fund goes towards the county contracts, which is our LA County Sheriff's Department and our animal care and control contract. Other than that, it's personnel and operating, and in operating are things like special programs. For example, our mortgage assistance and rental assistance programs, small business grants to be helping with the community right now, especially during COVID. Here for you to see is the actual library operating budget. And what I've provided for you is three years of actuals, as well as the estimated twenty twenty where we ended the year, in addition to the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. In the first three columns, in the transfers in, you can see about one point one to one point four million dollars. That represents what the general fund was contributing to library operations. And in the final year of twenty twenty-one, due to our extenuating circumstances with COVID, we combined all the funds together so that we can be more efficient and transparent in the general fund and what the true operational costs of our city are. For expenditures, you see salaries, contract services, utilities, office and operating. Contract services is the LSNS contract. And all other items are in city costs that we can control. The net total, you can see at the bottom. I wouldn't pay too much attention to the first four columns because we were doing fund accounting. This was prior to combining the library with the general fund. But you can see that in the last column that the general fund is still contributing about one point three million dollars towards the operations of the library. Do you have any questions so far? Okay, feel free to stop me if you have any questions or need additional clarity. So here for you to see is the general fund's five-year projection. The bars in blue are our expenditures, and you can see that it's incrementally increasing because unfortunately, the cost of doing business continues to increase even during difficult economic times. The line in yellow represents revenues to the general fund, and there you can see unfortunately that it does not increase at the same rate as our expenditures do. That line is a lot more stable because sales tax has been heavily impacted by COVID. Additionally, we're unsure what the impact will be to property taxes with a lot of homeowners deferring their payments or being unable to make their payments. The black line represents what the city's reserve, which is twenty percent, should be in each of those years. And the red line is the use of reserves if we don't do something to make sure that the city remains fiscally stable in the future. Some may interpret this as a city going bankrupt. The city will not go bankrupt. We will do everything we can before we allow that to happen. Sometimes that's reevaluating what programs or services to reduce. Other times, it's a boom in the economy and we can raise our revenues as well. We look at that each and every year to make sure that the city adopts a balanced budget. So why sales tax? A sales tax is charged on a ticket price of most goods, so you only pay it when you consume it. And the items that are exempt from this are groceries, prescription medication and other certain essential items. I just want to give you a little bit of a breakdown of what sales tax entails. So for a hundred dollar couch, you would pay nine dollars and fifty cents in taxes. Six dollars of that would go to the state of California, two dollars and fifty cents would go to the county of LA, and one dollar of that would come to the city of Palmdale to go to our general fund. On the other side, if you were to purchase a forty thousand dollar car, now that means you can go to the neighboring city and purchase it, but you would be charged sales tax of where you actually live and register the vehicle. So if you're in Palmdale, twenty-four hundred of that thirty-eight hundred dollar total sales tax paid would go to the state, a thousand would go to the county of LA, and four hundred dollars of that would go to Palmdale. And that's at the current nine and a half percent sales tax rate for Palmdale. So overall, as a city, we generate a hundred and seventy-five point seven five million dollars in sales tax in the city. Six percent or a hundred and eleven million go to the state. Two and a half percent or forty-six point two five million go to the county. And one percent goes to the city, we're eighteen and a half million. So the pie chart that we saw earlier, about twenty-six percent of our general fund relies on sales tax. That's that eighteen and a half million dollars there. Before COVID, we were actually about twenty million dollars a year, but as a result of COVID, we've had to drastically reduce that amount.
I have a quick question. We had a bond that we passed, was it a year ago or two years ago? Is that impacting the general budget still or no?
A bond that was passed a couple of years ago?
It was the one that they used to do like the construction for some of the new parks and like redoing some of the roads.
That was the Vision Project in the mid, like, two thousand and six?
No, it was more recent than that.
The one that we used to build the amphitheater, the water park, the pools?
That happened, I'm thinking of even more recent than that. Because when they repaid, they said it was bond money at work. I just didn't know if like, is there anything in the general, is there any bonds that are current right now or that those are all used up?
So those bonds that were probably used to build facilities came out of the Park Development Fund. It wouldn't be general fund, but in the event that that fund was unable to pay for, the general fund would pick that up. There are general obligation bonds that we do still have some of, but they were issued back in the early two thousands, and we haven't done anything recently since two thousand eight, I believe.
Thank you.
We have refinanced bonds, though, to get more favorable interest rates.
Okay.
This, the slides provides you a breakdown of how the sales tax is used by each agency. For the state of California, you can see of the six percent, four percent goes to their general fund. Point five percent goes towards local health and social programs as well as public safety. And one percent goes to their local revenue fund. For the county of LA, a majority of it, of the two and a half percent, is used for transportation, so road repair, except measure H, which is for homeless prevention. And for the city of Palmdale, our entire one percent goes to the general fund for general allocation during the budget. It's really important to see how much money that the state gets because I'm sure, you know, Palmdale provides the most indirect impact to our residents, we get the least amount of money, and the state has the most amount of money and you see less of them. This is important to the budget because we need something that the city of Palmdale can control and that by law cannot be touched by the county or state. It's a continued source of revenue to fund essential services in the city of Palmdale such as public safety, recreational classes, infrastructure repair, facility repair, even the library. Residents, businesses and visitors will benefit directly from this, and it will secure the future of Palmdale. And what I mean by securing the future of Palmdale as well as making sure locally produced funds stay in Palmdale, you can see here that the county and the county, the state are facing major budget deficits and that they're looking for other ways to generate revenue for them as well. All public agencies are definitely seeing a lot of reduced revenue as a result of COVID. And so our hands are pretty much tied in the amount of things that we can do. So sales tax or other kinds of taxes are things that we essentially resort to.
Can I ask you a really quick question just about the, the sales tax? When you're, when you're looking, I don't even know how to quite put the question. Is there a way to, do we know where the sales tax money is going that we used to get? We've got the different difference in percentage now. Do we know that that, if that's going out of state, do we know if it's going out of country? Do we have any idea at all where it's going and how we might be able to recapture it?
Can you clarify that question a little bit more, by our sales tax leaving the state?
So, obviously, if we've got a drop in sales tax, people are not buying as much stuff here. So I'm just wondering, are they buying it online from Amazon? Do we know that that's where our sales tax dollars are going now with COVID to places, to online? Is that what we're supposing is happening to that?
So I think it's a combination of items. I believe that we, we actually work with a sales tax consultant, HDL, who helps us do this analysis. There's a number of factors going in. One is there are no stores open to generate sales tax. Two, with the job unemployment so high, people are not buying anything and they have house payments and so they're not spending at all. And the third part is yes, because people are going to online. There are increases in what they call the pool tax. So for example, if you and I were to buy items off of Amazon, the sales tax that we pay goes to a county pool, which is LA County. Based on our allocation, which depends on the amount of sales tax we generate in the county or our population, then we are distributed that amount of money. So right now, Palmdale receives about two percent or less of what the county pool is. So you're absolutely right. When things are purchased online, Palmdale is not credited one hundred percent. It just goes into a pool and is divvied up by eighty-eight cities.
Is there any, have the city, because I know the cities are kind of in some kind of alliances together for certain things. Are you guys, as cities, together trying to get more of our share from LA County to get some of that back? Because every municipality is going to be facing these unbelievable shortfalls now with, with all the financial stuff. I'm just wondering, is there anything on the table to try to recoup it? Because it's really, oh, it's just being spent, it's just being allocated in a different way.
So there's a couple of things that the League of California Cities Coalition that we're a part of looks at. Recently, I'm sure you've heard of, I can't recall, but it was an online furniture distributor out in South Dakota. A lawsuit had to be filed so that they would collect California or other state sales tax and distribute it to the state. I'm sure you've seen that when you purchase things online out of state, you don't have to pay sales tax. Well, a recent lawsuit, federal lawsuit ruled in favor of the states that any distributor who made, I believe, over five hundred thousand dollars in sales annually had to collect sales tax for the respective jurisdiction and submit it for distribution. So that was the first step. The next step is determining how and when the fair way of distributing sales tax that's collected, instead of going into a pool, one hundred percent to go to the cities. It's difficult because they look at where the sales desk is. So if we were to go to Lancaster and buy something, we would pay Lancaster's sales tax. They would collect it and they would get it. It's either that or sometimes we buy things and we send them to our work. We send them to our home, we send them to our friend's house. So it's very difficult to determine where that address lies. And so it's a sorting out of that as well. Unfortunately, there's a lot of inequality in going in that method. And so they're still working on it and figuring out. What happens when we do that is some cities become big winners and other cities become big losers.
I see, so it's a very complicated issue.
Yes.
Thank you, that was very helpful. What are the, the eighty-eight cities? What is the criteria that is used to determine what percentage from the pool each individual city gets? Is it just a free fall pick or?
It's about the percentage of sales tax generated. So they have a lot of data of how it's collected. Everybody reports to the Board of Equalization. So they take that information in the city of Palmdale, sometimes based on population. What population of Palmdale is a part of LA County's eight million people? Where about two percent are a hundred and sixty thousand people.
That doesn't seem fair.
I agree one hundred percent with you, a lot of us do.
That seems, wow.
Yes. Any more questions? So I bring to your attention LA County and all their taxes that we pay. As you can see, out of ten measures out of, since two thousand eight, the county is really good at passing tax measures. There's only been two or three, I apologize, three that they failed at. The first one was measure J in two thousand twelve. They came back in two thousand sixteen and passed that same measure under the name measure M. For measure P, for Parks and Recreation, in two thousand fourteen, same thing, they failed. And they came back in two thousand sixteen and were able to pass that same measure called measure A and get property taxes from our residents. Measure FD was recent, that one's the fire one, that was put on the ballot in March of twenty twenty. That one failed, but I assure you, the deficit still lies with the fire district in the LA County and they will very likely be back to try to get the money for that. This is even more interesting. In correlation with those measures that Palm, or the county passed, this is how Palmdale voters voted. And you can see out of all these, there are only four measures that Palmdale voters voted down. The first one, measure H in two thousand twelve, was a hotel tax, so it didn't have a direct effect on Palmdale. The next one was a landfill tax, again, no major direct effect on Palmdale, but you could see how close those votes were. Measure H, which was the homeless prevention sales tax, and then measure FD, which is for fire. Again, the measure failed, but not by very much, about five hundred votes there. So here's a case study, why I brought up why LA County and how they pass taxes is so important. Measure H was passed in two thousand seventeen for homeless prevention. It had an approval rate of sixty-nine point three percent for sales tax. It's point two five percent sales tax across the county. It raises approximately three hundred and fifty-five million dollars annually. Palmdale's contribution to that pot is four point six two five, and we only get back a hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. Cities like Santa Monica and Long Beach, they receive a significant amount of funding. And again, population, and I'm sure you guys have visited there and seen the homeless population there. They receive the benefit, but they do not contribute to the pool. And the reason why they don't is because they already passed a sales tax, a local sales tax measure that brought their sales tax rate to the maximum California cap of ten point two five percent. So they beat the county to the punch, essentially is what they did. So to give you an idea of how the county or the state, or actually the county goes back to the city of Palmdale, for every dollar that the county collects in Palmdale, we get back twenty-three cents. Now multiply that times eighty-eight cities, that's what the county is collecting. Sometimes more in other cases. So how would a sales tax measure affect Palmdale customers? If they were to buy a cup of coffee at three dollars and fifty cents today, they would pay three dollars and eighty-three cents. With a past sales tax measure, it would be three dollars and eighty-six cents for an increase of three cents. For lunch, you can see here, it'd be an increase of eleven cents. For household goods at fifty dollars, it would be an increase of thirty-eight cents. And for groceries, there would be no impact because there is no sales tax imposed on groceries.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Obviously, we're part of LA County, but like city to city, there are different ordinances apply. So like, for example, in Lancaster, they have a cannabis tax because they have legalized recreational dispensaries and medical ones. That hasn't passed in the city. I'm not advocating for or against it, this is just a fiscal question. Do you, are you familiar with how much that syntax affects Lancaster's budget in a time like this? Like, are they still finding a benefit from having that as a source of income or is that like not even paying out?
I'll be honest with you, I haven't studied Lancaster. I'll be honest with you, I haven't studied Lancaster. I do know in their last uh budget that they just adopted. They did announce that they were canceling all recreational classes through December. Um they did maintain vacancies and chose not to fill them. I believe they asked for concessions from their employees as well. And they um sold transportation money to bring in um, I think of just under a million dollars to their general fund. I while I understand it may be helpful, we're looking for long-term solutions. And I believe that was probably uh the short term to balance the current budget. But we can definitely look into that and bring back the answer for you. So if me- of the Palmdale voters approve measure AB, these are the list of projects that the money would go towards. Uh support rental mortgage assistance, upgrade emu- emergency communications and improve emergency preparedness. Maintaining nine-one-one emergency response. Keeping our public parks open, safe and clean, supporting community policing activities for at-risk youth and mental health efforts. Address homelessness, support services for local military veterans. Maintain food distribution services, repair streets and potholes and retain and recruit local businesses through economic development. Again, this is a general sales tax. Uh we polled about a year ago, or I'm sorry, COVID's time goes really slow. About six months ago, we did poll this measure, the sales tax measure has been in the making over the past year and a half for the city of Palmdale. Um so we had a very good idea in February, what our residents were looking for. And they were very interested in public safety, uh recreation, uh local water resources. Infrastructure such as potholes, facility maintenance. And so these were the things that we said if passed, the money would go towards. Also included with this is mandatory oversight committee to make sure that the city is accountable to the public. That it's not another source of money to be assumed to be wasted. That an oversight committee made up of our residents and business owners would be there to make sure and review all expenses before they're smacked.
So it's a simple majority then?
Correct. That concludes my presentation and do you have any other further questions for you or for me?
Well, only on that list of benefits, that includes a library, right, as part of?
Absolutely, the library is part of the general fund. So everything touches everything. If priorities shift, obviously, we're going to shift the funding where it needs to be. Um but the important part that the city's council has made a commitment to do is to save our services. And maintain stability for our community. Uh like I said, they made a very difficult decision to go into reserves and not cut any services whatsoever. We have as a city and our all our employees, we gave up concessions that amounted to nearly three hundred thousand dollars this year. To give back to the community. We listened to um our community when the businesses said they were struggling, we released a small business grant. Um we also are doing mortgage and rental assistance programs for our community to save property values. Um and again, the library didn't see any cuts either. So it was very important to them and a really difficult leadership role to say, you know what? We don't know what's gonna happen, but we still wanna keep everybody whole and keep moving forward and see what the next day brings.
I'm shocked, I mean, I I am appreciative, but I'm also shocked, I knew. I I mean, I've been asking about the budget for the last couple of months, cause I knew something had to be coming and. Um wow, that's quite a commitment, um on the part of the city council, that's that's pretty bold. So um a lot of kudos to them and 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 to you guys for for having that kind of faith. Cause that also requires faith in your community, cause you know you're gonna bounce back, so.
I wanna give credit to your staff here, the director Eric and Carrie, they're the ones who sat in the room and fought for the library. For every penny, so they brought forth all the arguments for the library and made sure that there was sufficient funding to keep it going. Even looking at um curbside service and those things and really pivoting and adjusting to the needs of the community during this difficult time. So it was them and they deserve all their credit.
Thank you guys, uh thank you everyone who advocated for the library, because especially at a time like this, um. Online resources are incredibly important for students, for our community. Um I can't think of how many times just this month I've referred people to like the online library resources, like hey, did you know the library offers that? Oh, did you know, distance learning is hard, did you know the library has free online tutoring, did you know? So thank you guys, cause it really does impact our community.
And I will say, my kids loved his story time, so.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Reiki, um you don't have to tell us how great the uh staff of the library and the Parks District are. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, that was a great presentation.
Yeah, very informative, that was terrific. Uh the director's report. Robert, please.
Well, I unabashedly give many kudos to Marie. And I'm very thankful she came to give that presentation, I uh. I I attend the city council meetings, I've been attending them virtually since COVID. And she gave something very similar to the city council a couple of months ago. And I learned so much, as you just did, but partly being new to California, but. Wow, what an eye-opening reality of how sales tax works in California. In LA County and how some cities have really taken advantage of it. And uh and hats off to uh. I I already appreciated working with and for the city of of Palmdale, even though I'm a current contract service. Uh but this is really, a- as you have s- has said and stated, has really shown a commitment that that I believe in. But it didn't have to be this way so far, you know, the city leadership has declared libraries essential from the beginning. And they didn't have to do that, as you know, other libraries have not done that. Um so really appreciate Marie coming and and sharing that information. And 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 thank you, Eric, I will pay you an M and M's later for your advocacy and and other things. All right, getting on with to my report. Uh regarding the library's community inclusiveness initiative that I talked about last month. I'm happy to report that of the items that trustee David shared from her personal collection of books pertaining to race relations. The library already owned about half of the items and the others have now been ordered if if they're available, so thank you very much. Also regarding this initiative, I'm going to distribute a document that I I've been thinking a lot about. And uh and then I actually worked on writing it today.
Thank you.
As I mentioned last month, the the uh community inclusiv- inclusiveness initiative I was beginning. The next step that I took was um. I announced to library staff last week that we would be. Uh establishing a standing committee of of staff members. And so I announced that, I told them that I'd be sending out information about the purposes of this committee. And then asking for volunteers and then uh and some might get appointed, like Jamie Lee, the assistant director is already appointed. And I'll be chairing the committee. Uh but this document gives that background as to the reasons behind forming this committee. Um I'm not going to read it to you, you you can read it, you're reading it now. I'll just provide some comments in general. And as you know, this is, this is a uh a priority and objective of the library. It it's one of mine that we that we're everyone's, we're everyone's library in the community. Along those lines, when I first came to Palmdale, I started a Latino outreach committee. Because that's something that that I had done at my last library in Utah. And it was a good effort, we got some good things done through that committee. Frankly, after gaining some more experience here in Palmdale. I started the the same sort of advisor committee at my last library. Largely because there was really not much of anything going on in that community for the Hispanic community, in in that particular community in um in Utah. It was, and so the library became the place where we started Hispanic Heritage Festival that wasn't going on in that city. And and it and it really became a wonderful thing for the library to engage with the Latino community there. And so that was my thinking coming here, and while we we have had some inroads to the Latino Outreach Committee. We've gotten on the radio Spanish or at least on a radio Spanish station, uh talk radio station. And we talk about library programs on there on a regular basis. We have participated in some of the um Hispanic or Latino events in the community. But I I've come to realize that there's a lot already going on and I'm, that's great, in in the city of of Palmdale. For the Latino community to come together and other members of the community to to enjoy their culture. And so while we we have continued to do that and we will continue to do that. Work on our outreach to to the Hispanic or Latino community. Frankly, this this discussion for the last couple of months. Um has provided an opportunity for me to to expand uh frankly, my perspective. And and this is the result, so the so the Latino Outreach Committee and its purposes will be folded in to this committee. Because this is, this is broader, obviously. And and as I write here, um to to try to articulate the purposes of this committee of what it is. And also what it is not, you know, the 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 third bullet there emphasizes that. In the spirit of library professionalism and ethics, we do not take political stands. We, in fact, that can become a slippery slope in a hurry if it looks like the library is advocating for one point of view over another. And so we strive to avoid that, we just want everyone to feel like, come to the library to learn, to share ideas. It's a safe zone where you can do that, either personally or in a in a group. So in that spirit, this committee will be forming. And the last paragraph there is uh, this is the document that I'll be sending out to library staff. And inviting them to join me on this committee. Uh I have a few staff members that if they don't volunteer, then I'll be having a chat with them, I won't strong-arm them, but uh. But I have my ways to encourage participation, if if they're being shy. And um and so I really look forward to what this committee will uh will start to focus on in in the next month or so. Is when we'll we'll start to form, start to meet and see where we go from there. I will also add, uh regarding this this initiative, if you're not aware. While attending the city council meetings virtually, I have observed that the city has recently created. Officially by city ordinance, a human rights committee. That seems to mirror at least some of what the library is attempting to do with with our committee. So I found that interesting then.
Could we pause on this one and take any questions or comments that the trustees might have?
Yeah.
Thanks, I did have a few. First of all, thank, this is great, this is beautiful. I really appreciate the language in here, removing barriers, and I appreciate that you differentiated between literal and perceived. Because sometimes people don't feel heard, because to one person it might, it is literal and to someone else it might feel perceived. And at the end of the day, that's one person's lived experience.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for that, um I appreciate the part about where you in the first bullet, where you said openly assessing, to me, that that's transparency, which is. What public entities should be. Um I appreciate um the fact that it's gonna be including staff, a question I had was um. Do, is it open to the friends of the library, like the board members and people who are part of the friends, or is it just staff?
Good, good question, at at this point, I I will not open it up to the friends. Uh I feel like maybe later, um but frankly, it's so new to us that I I want us to get kind of our.
Sure.
Our sea legs, so to speak, however, um I was gonna say this later, but if any of you as board members. Had a desire to to participate, to attend these meetings, or just, I mean, I'll be giving updates here. But if you wanted to come be a part of of those discussions or those meetings, I would invite you to do that.
Um my other, the only thing I was going to suggest, um, cause I appreciate everything you said about like, of course, it's about democratic discourse. And presenting different viewpoints, I put like, that's something I thought about was, it doesn't explicitly say, except for hate speech. I don't know if that's necessary or not, but I almost feel like it might be, just because, for example, like how when Jamie Lee made that beautiful pamphlet, she put in things about race discourse. But she also put the opposite perspective, like here's blue lives matter perspective, you know, like um what does it mean to be a police officer in the age of Black Lives Matter protests? So I appreciate that um opposing viewpoint, but I'm wondering about how would someone see that differently than if someone said, well, I'm about white power. That's my perspective, I wanna come to the library and I wanna find things about like the KKK or something like. How do we maybe word something in there about, of course, it's not political, of course, it's a safe zone for everyone, but. Something that's not safe is obviously hate speech, is there something we can include in there about that?
Um I I appreciate what you're saying and and that is something that I that I thought about and I actually think about fairly often. And and it it it's still a challenging balance. Cause even, eh there are laws against hate speech, however, there is still freedom of speech.
Right, censorship, that's why I was like, I don't, I'm like, I don't wanna wander into censorship territory.
Right.
But I don't want it to become a place where it's like, where that counter argument becomes hate speech, I don't per-.
Yeah.
I just think it's, it it gets dangerous when you talk about censoring anybody's opinion, even though I would totally be against that. I can tell you that one of the things that I did in college is I bought Mein Kampf, cause I wanted to just read the philosophy and.
True.
I think sometimes where you and I as common sense people understand that. I think it just gets into such a gray area that. You know, and terrible things are happening in our country when we've done that, so.
That's why, yeah, that's why I was like, suggestion, but definitely like I can totally see the opposite point where like, if we don't need to include it, that's fine, cause I don't wanna wander into censorship territory.
Yeah, it kinda gets scary there.
Or something like that came up, we'd handle it as it came up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that that's the best ultimate answer, uh but but I will comment it if I may, ju- just for. Whatever may be worth, a a couple of points, one is, I feel very comfortable, if if there is clearly anything, any behavior. That is breaking the law, then I have no problem enforcing that, cause I'm pointing to the law and I can say whatever it is.
Yeah.
And if it's hate speech, I say, well, go talk to your elected officials who made this law. Uh so if someone is engaging actively in hate speech, then I have no problem enforcing that. However, when it comes to providing information about hate speech, my job is to provide it, if if they have an interest in it. And and I and I appreciate the quick, I'm gonna share this.
Yeah.
I'm gonna share this in the for what it's worth category from my own uh learning experience, frankly. Yeah, sometimes I wonder if I share too much with y'all, but uh years ago, when I was my my first library director job. I I learned a hard lesson along these lines, without providing any political commentary, this is what happened. A um. A a member of the community came in, wanted to, wanted us to put up a display and they were going to help us. And we agreed to it, just wanting to be warm and friendly, because we are those kind of people. The topic happened to be on uh, it was on uh animal rights. And the display was from a PETA organization. Then, while it was up, we had one or two residents kind of came in and they became livid. That we would promote that, cause that's how they perceived it. You're promoting this point of view. And the end result was, okay, we're gonna give you equal time. Because that seemed like that was, that was the best answer. Um and so this particular person was very heavy into uh gun rights, NRA. And so we gave them equal time, they they had as many weeks with their display on uh on the right to bear arms and our NRA propaganda. Which PETA was propaganda.
Yeah.
So there was balance. However, I also learned from that that I do not feel the obligation to put up a display about every hot item that's out there. We will provide information so somebody can get it easily and we'll help them to find it. But there's a difference between that and actually like putting up there kind of in their face, sort of.
Yeah, that makes sense. Appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Yeah, no.
And trustee David, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, trustee, what was your hand?
Were are we on comment? Just ready to comment?
Yes, and there's one point.
Oh, no, I'm nothing out.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us take that little pause.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And yeah, anytime if questions come up or you'd like me to elaborate on anything, please feel free to do that. So I move on to other topics. In other related news, I would like to inform the board that current president of the Friends of the Library Tina Victory is officially stepping down in October as she and her husband plan to place their home on the market and move closer to family in the near future. Tina wanted to provide a report tonight. She has a lot of things going on. She asked me to convey that. She's been a great president. We know that. We're fortunate that the current vice president is a wonderful individual. Diana Love is her name. She has actually been very active in the city and is a current city ambassador officially in the last year. Diana is, will become the president, and the Friends board is now working on making as smooth a transition as possible.
Is Tina going to come visit us before she leaves?
I know she wants to. I don't know. She has a pretty hectic schedule.
Can we honor her in some way before she moves? I think I needed a content warning about that. I was not ready for that.
Yeah, we'll try to do that. Yes. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
She was exceptional. You can't just let go and not say thank you.
Yeah. After such a roaring success with the Harry Potter Grab and Go program on July 31st, the library is now working on more Grab and Go programs with various themes. The last one was held on August 26th and was called Back to School Grab and Go. Various learning activities or learning and activity supplies were provided in bags to patrons who came to the library during the appointed time. Approximately 50 patrons attended and left with some library swag. I'm using that term now because now we have library swag. Never thought I'd be saying that, but hey. Including information flyers about other library and city services. So we're stuffing the bags with bookmarks and things about our other services. And the city is providing this information, this stuff in the bag, such as about the upcoming tax measure. And I will share with you, that was a bit of a test as well. We purposely marketed that only on social media because we wanted to kind of test. And so we learned from that. And so some of the future Grab and Go that I'm going to talk about, we will also do press releases about, and that will increase participation. The next Grab and Go program will be Talk Like a Pirate Day.
Your favorite.
It's one of my faves. On Friday, September 18th. The library has used this opportunity previously to promote our Mangle Languages service. That's where patrons can learn 70 different languages for free with their library card online. And it has been a positive, well-received program in the past. This time, staff and patrons are encouraged to dress in their best pirate attire. A full-dressed pirate will serve as greeter at the door. And there will be an appearance by Captain Jack Sparrow in life-size cutout form for anyone wishing to take a photo with the famous scallywag. We anticipate this Grab and Go program will be well-attended. So we're getting ready for that.
Do you guys have any plans for Halloween for Grab and Go? I know a lot of people in the community are like, Halloween's canceled.
Excellent segue. That's my next bullet. You're honor roll, trustee David. Another Grab and Go program is in its planning stages for Friday, October 30th, as well in connection with Halloween. Now, the details, we're still working on those, but we're really planning for a big turnout.
Yeah.
Anywhere from 500 to 1,000, we think, maybe.
Do we need volunteers for that?
Uh, maybe. Are you volunteering?
Well, I would normally have candy, but I think a lot of people just aren't this year because there's like, what do we do? Like, do we leave the candy open? Do we throw it at the kids? Like, so like if it's something that's safe and it's organized, I mean, I'm a teacher. I can tell everyone to get in line.
Yeah. Well, we will note that.
I would love to bless the kids in the city.
Okay, all right. Appreciate that. We're working on the details. We're going to decorate the plaza a little bit in front of the library. Scary music piped out from the little balcony upstairs. We're talking about, you know, a graveyard set up out there in the plaza, not actual graves. It's all, I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I thought you were tying it into Dia de los Muertos because that's right after Halloween. So that could be a cool...
We're going to do a separate one on Day of the Dead on Monday, the Monday following. So you'll be getting more information about that as well. So, yeah, we're looking forward to that. And that's still in the planning stages, but we'll be doing something big Grab and Go that day. Okay, next bullet. After a recent meeting with Carrie Smith, Director of Parks and Recreation, when I learned more about the city's current day camp program, Jamie Beck, Assistant Director, and I visited Marie Kerr Park Community Center to learn more about the day camp. With Jamie Lee taking the lead, the library is now working on ways to support the program there with library resources. The first round, let me describe a little bit more and Eric can certainly chime in. So what I learned is that that the city Parks and Rec staff have been providing this daycare-type service since March. And now it's continuing into the fall for first responders.
City staff and educators.
Okay.
Employees of the school district, Westside and Alamo School District.
Yeah, okay. And I think you had like 70 to 100 kids before, but now there's about 25 or 30, something like that.
We have, yeah, that was our total registration, but now we're averaging about 40 a day.
Okay. So we learned more about that. And Carrie, Carrie Smith's question to us was, well, you know, is there something the library can do to help support? And so Jamie Lee and I went over. And the first round of, this is our first foray into this support program. The first round of small library collections of books is being selected by Jamie Lee and prepared for delivery to the site with the intent that the collections will be switched out every week or two. This program is brand new. We're happy and excited to work with Parks and Rec staff and to provide this support. We will also be exploring other ideas how the library can support this day camp as well as look for the possibility of duplicating with other groups or entities in the city. A progress report on these efforts will be given at next month's board meeting. So Jamie Lee's been working on hand-selecting about 25 to 30 books, different ages, because the ages range from kindergarten to middle school, I think. Yeah. So Jamie Lee has been selecting those books and we plan to get those over there sometime this week. And then we'll go from there. Next bullet, I'm very happy to announce that Deborah Gibson-Washington has joined our library team since the last board meeting. Deborah comes to us, this is a part-time, 20-hour-per-week position. Deborah comes to us with previous library experience in Santa Frida, which she loved. Then she left the active workforce to homeschool her children. And then the last few years, with the kids out of the home, with her own children grown, she began to work with special needs children in the Lancaster School District. Deborah also comes to us with an associate degree in business from College of the Canyons and a bachelor's degree in social science, career guidance, life coaching from Cal State Chico. So we're excited to have Deborah join us. And then I wanted to briefly report that the fines and fee, fines-free discussion is not being forgotten. But the LSNS team is still gathering pertinent information on the topic for a future presentation. And also, I have not forgotten the interest expressed by several board members to learn more about the selection and collection development process for determining what items are added to the collection. An informational presentation we made to the board during a future meeting on that.
I already started to address that. From what you were talking about today, you've already started to address the question. So thank you.
Okay. And that's all I had for my report.
Well, thank you. Questions, comments? Great, Robert. Thank you so very much. It's so great.
Okay, thank you.
Other staff comments? Eric, thank you.
Good evening, board. I want to apologize, first of all, I meant to bring you flyers on this event and I left them on my desk, so I will email them to you. I want to make sure that you guys are aware of an event coming up to honor our veterans and our first responders. I don't know if you guys have heard, but the city is hosting the Palmdale's first-ever Healing and Honor Field. And I'm just looking at the website, so I apologize if I'm looking down. What's that?
I did see on Facebook and Instagram.
So it's going to be from November 1st through the 11th. It's a whole field that's going to be held at Plona Vista. It's a whole field of 2020 American flags that you can purchase. And the money will go towards some of our veterans groups as a fundraiser. And you can honor a veteran, a first responder, living and deceased, someone that you feel is worthy of that honor. And there's a website that you can go to, healingfield.org/palmdale. I will certainly send you a flyer as well, but this is definitely something that our city manager and our city staff feel like we need. This is a very, very special event for Veterans Day. And also, it's just nice to, we all need some healing right now, don't we? So this is something that I think is going to be very, very nice that's coming up for the city. So I want to make sure you're at least aware of it initially. And I will send you a flyer via email. Again, I apologize for not bringing that information to you.
I really have an email anyway.
Okay, great. Well, I could have emailed it too. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee comments?
I just had a quick one. I just wanted to say congrats to trustee Morris on her retirement. And there's some cupcakes in the back for everybody to partake in six feet away from each other. And, uh, of course, you did the first, do you want to grab that and hand that to her so I can do it too? Sure, that'd be great.
Oh, how sweet.
I don't think you can legally open champagne during a board meeting, but better to ask for forgiveness than permission. I'm just kidding. Congrats. And you're still staying on the board, right? No pressure? Yeah.
Yes, I'm...
And there's cupcakes here.
Come on.
I've been on the boards.
Oh, my goodness. I love roses. That's my favorite flower.
I figured. You're a tough lady. You get the red velvet first pick and then there's enough for everybody.
It's like, okay.
Trustee David, that was so great. Thank you for doing that. That's so terrific. Well, congratulations. Oh, there's personal stuff in there, too.
You know I'm long-winded.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Oh, boy. No, it's just the beginning. Actually, I'm going to probably take up my other life, community activist. Just really getting more involved with our community.
You'll be a great representative.
I know. I have a little more, I will have more time available.
Yes.
Be able to do that.
All right, well, thank you, trustee David and Maazelpa. Okay, any other trustee comments?
Yeah, I just have one. It has to do with, more to do with perspective, kind of following up with what you were talking about. And about a year ago, I saw a really interesting news story. And there was a Confederate memorial place inside one of our local LA cemeteries, which surprised me, maintained by the Daughters of the Confederacy. Daughters of the Confederacy wisely realized LA is probably not a place you want to continue to maintain a Confederate memorial. So they thought to move it. But what I found was really interesting about this story is there was a community activist and she would bring millennial African-American kids because a lot of them didn't believe that that kind of racism existed in Los Angeles and as early as, you know, their grandparents and their parents' lives. And so there's this set of women and they were actually starting to see it go because they said they were using it as education for what, you know, the hidden racism, like kind of what you were talking about. The hidden places that we got, things like that. And so that's kind of why I believe in just non-censorship because you never know when something horrible to somebody might save somebody else. You know, it's kind of, it's just a perspective thing. I just wanted to show that because it was really moving for me. I thought a lot about it after I saw it. I thought, I would have never, ever thought of that perspective for that, you know, for that memorial.
That's what I appreciate about our board is that we offer each other so many different perspectives and we grow from each other. I appreciate that. Yeah. So I just wanted to mention that. That was it.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we're going to adjourn at 6:31.
Cupcakes are on the, cupcakes are over as usual.